We're going to get started with the agenda portion of this meeting. I see a lot of people here, I know you much know what you're here for. Unfortunately, I don't even see the guy here who's supposed to be here. We're going to go through the agenda, and then we'll go into the public portion and swear, and it'll be the first item after the sunshine now. We have a liquor license hearing scheduled for LaFremosa. We have warrants on second reading. ODAS 061203, a bond warrant providing for the 2012 General Capital Improvement Program by the city of New Brunswick, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $2,745,973. Therefore, authorizing of debt the amount of $2,615,000, requiring a debt payment of ODAS 061204, the bond warrants, providing for various improvements to the water system by the city of New Brunswick, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $930,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $930,000 bonds, reduce the financing cost thereof. We have warrants for discussion, our first reading. ODAS 071201, warrants to mandatory revise, general warrants in chapter 2.8, pre-scheduled. ODAS 071202, warrants to mandatory revise, general warrants in chapter 4, front yard storage.
We're going to amend that because as a reference in the ordinance, as it's submitted to you, we can close the back door, unless they can definitely work for rear yard.
And ODAS 071203, being held with request of a city attorney. We have resolutions. RDA 071201, approve an agenda amendment. 02, approve payroll. 03, see, hold that request of a city clerk is unnecessary. 04, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 05, approve emergency temporary proclamation to 2012. 06, approve purchase by a cease and bargain from WPCS International Liquor Operations for labor for installation and mode and configuration, not to exceed $1,650. 07, authorize refund to Mystic Title Agency in the amount of $2,246.56 against 2012 taxes for 109 registered. 08, authorize rebid for lease of a portion of property, this is Van Nuys Water Tower, and no bids were received, this is for the antennas, I believe?
Yes, Verizon has had for 26 years cellular antennas on the water tower. Their lease has come due. We're not able to just simply renegotiate with them, we have to put it out to bid to any part, even like the interested in leasing a portion of the tower. Regrettably, no one bid this most recent time around, so we're looking to go out again and do the same thing. It's worth, contract going forward now is probably worth better than $40,000 worth of revenue a year for that kind of arrangement.
09, approve appointment of account to Barnes White, representing a police officer, Daniel Mazan, not to exceed $2,984.15. 10, approve award of grant for rehabilitation home improvements, James Fleming and Margaret Paola. 205, New York Avenue, not to exceed $22,295. 11, approve award of contract with Culinary Ventures for vending machine services, the term is a 12-month, beginning on August 1st, 2012. Number 12, approve or disapprove of person-to-person place-to-place transfer of liquor license from One Penn Plaza to Court Tavern on 124 Church Street. 13, approve request for use of city property at Ulo Park Field Area, line of Ulo Mansion, request by Brownsville University Recreation Department for refreshment field day event Sunday, September 2nd, 2012, or any day of Sunday, September 9th, times 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 14, approve request for use of city property, Boyd Park, request by the Brother Cultural Center, a series of concerts and performances from Crossroads, George Street Playhouse, State Theater, the American Repertory Ballet, Saturdays, August 11th, 18th to 25th, September 8th, 15th to 22nd, 29th to 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., please extra duty is required. 15, approve request for use of city property, Ulo Park Jogging Path and Pavilion area, the IKEA Rondell Stevens Memorial Scholarship Fund, a walkathon to benefit the IKEA Rondell Stevens Memorial Scholarship Fund, Saturday, October 20th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. 16, approve amendment of resolution, RDA 061236, the reason is to add the use of charcoal grills for food vendors, request for use of city property, location Boyd Park, Brother Recreation, City Market, annual Rad River Festival, Sunday, September 23rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 17, approve renewal of 2012, 2013 liquor licenses. 18, approve request for use of city property, Recreation Park, Pine Street Community, Cheryl Smith Community, available picnic and water slide, Sundays, July 1st, 22nd, and 29th, and Sundays, August 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, and then end at 8:00 p.m.
Mr. Racine, I was hoping to speak with the applicant before the meeting. 10 hours of hydrant being open to support the water slide, I'm a little concerned about in terms of water pressure out in that neighborhood, and I think it's a wonderful idea, we fully support it, we also are offering our city insurance to cover the event. I just wanted you to know I'm going to try and speak with the applicant, see if we can find a happy medium with respect to the hydrants.
Should we go ahead with the vote, or can you do it on pro forma next week?
No, I would, I think their request is to use the park for those hours, the water piece is an element of it, and if you just have faith in us that will negotiate something fair, I would go ahead and vote on it tonight.
19, approve amendment of resolution, RDA 051266, reason to pay additional legal fees for special counsel on matter of the under. Do not, I never say do not. Yeah, thank you. From $20,306.02 to $30,732.02. 20, approve amendment of resolution, RDA 081153, the reason is additional $12,600 required for supplemental traffic engineering design services for pedestrian crosswalk at George's Road with Hatch Mount McDonald, not to exceed $12,600. 21, approve award of contract for reconstruction and developing Rockport pumping station, replacement of the BFG, the water controllers, not to exceed $714,000.
There may be someone here who wants to be heard on that when you conclude your back four.
There was a bid protest lodged by the second low bidder, we instructed, or informed him that we intended to act on the contract tonight. Our law department, purchasing department, and our consulting engineers believe we have cured, the low bidder has cured any problem that existed, and we recommend an approval tonight.
Does he have a list of the bidders here?
I do. Give me one second, I'll, I have, Liberty, Liberty Construction and Developing is the NVE Mark III Electric is the protester, they're the second bidder, low bidder. Longo Electrical Mechanical is the high bidder.
I think I remember my cable.
Is there anything you need from us to feel better about it?
Yeah, I wanted, I didn't get a chance to review, I will review it tomorrow.
Lack of any comments, Mr.?
No, our consulting engineer is here tonight, if he had anything technical to ask. We'd like to move on the project, of course, but two weeks is not going to ruin the project that's such a...
Do you want to hold the bid protest for his last?
Just before you, the bid protest of your last, but I do want to hold it.
You want to hold the word?
Yes.
All right, so we'll hold that.
Get rid of the bid protest for his last, so don't bring him in there.
Yeah, we can hold that.
That's my question, what is that?
NVE, was the electrical contractor, did all our workforce have to, you keep a whole job, I believe at the water station, the filtration bank, they go out and, they do all the work.
They might have been a sub, Northeast Remco was the general.
Yeah, they were, they were sub, they do all the electrical work there, I remember that. So I would like to pay a little for this contract.
All right, moving on. 22, approve award of contract with Burris Hall Services, approve for recreation park design and construction, not to exceed $118,555. 23, approve payment for emergency procurement, the Nastis Brothers, for replacement of central air conditioning unit at Public Library, not to exceed $7,800. 24, approve amendment of resolution, RDA 061216, reason to correct account numbers with Mitzner and Mitzner. 25, approve renewal of agreement with Aetna Healthcare Traditional and POS Contract, health insurance for city employees, July 1st, 2013, this is being done on a thorough tongue. Mr. Locke, just give us a review on this, the terms and comparison you had.
Yes, the Etna proposal includes a 0% increase in all administrative costs, all stop-loss insurance fees, and to that extent, I think it's a great renewal. We have compared the cost of the Etna plan for the next 12 months against joining the state health benefits plan. We've included the Cigna contract in that analysis, we've included the Maxworth contract, and Maxworth is our prescription provider, and at the end of the day, we believe it's cheaper to stay, providing health benefits private, privately and independently in state health benefits plan by $551,000. I'm contemplating a competitive quote against the Cigna renewal, which could possibly reduce that contract by $248,000, so it is possible that the savings between staying private and joining the state health benefits plan might be as much as $800,000, I think that's significant money. We've looked at taking our population, looking at the existing benefits that they have, a union contract, and we've looked at putting placing it then in the state health benefits plan, and of course, no one fits exactly in the different boxes that the state health benefits plan offers. We would have to negotiate with those collective bargaining units, any changes of benefit, and there would be change in benefit plus and minus. I have three contracts that are currently in force, could not impose any health benefit changes on them without collective bargaining. We are doing, we have, staying private, we have the ability to do some other things to try and drive down our claims experience, we've contracted with a group called Partners in Care, who have, their sole purpose is to identify some of our members who are ill, not managing their illness as well, trying to focus on people with diabetes and hypertension, and to create one doctor who can help them manage their way with those particular ailments. We seem to think that we might see our claimings reduced by 3 million over the next six years by the value of the Partners in Care contract alone, you don't get the benefit of that in the state health benefits plan. So as I said in my memo clearly, if you choose to accept our recommendation and renew it at night, then we are deciding that we're staying private for the next 12 months, because you are either all in the state health benefits plan or you're all out, you can't be half in and half out.
All right, thank you.
And I hope the analysis is easy to understand, it is objective, we realized it again today because we got some additional information, but, so that's that. It's our major plan, the clear majority of the employees choose it, and we have the benefit of one of our brokers here tonight, Stuart Migdon from BGIA, who would be happy to be heard from if you had any questions from him, or for him, I should say. So anyway, our recommendation is to just renew it with that.
All right, thank you. 26, approve award of contract to USA Architects for inspection of exterior walls, the power of wall, the corner.
Corners.
Yes, thank you. Working copper roof at the city hall, not to exceed $10,400. 27, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 28, resolution to support an appeal, Rising versus Hopeville, by the Borough of Hopeville in New Jersey Legal Dissection House, and that is hit on the agenda. I saw, Mr. Fleming, if, please come up so we can have this up here, we'll get on with the proportion of meeting, and we'll get a swearing in as soon as we can, after we have some of that. The meeting will come at quarter, will a clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar is here. Councilmember Varladi.
President.
And Council President Reese.
Here. Please read President's notice regarding to the Open Public Meeting Act, been complied with and satisfied with annual notice, which gave sufficient notice to the time and place for conduct of all public meetings in municipal councils, city of New Brunswick. File of the city clerk, to place on appropriate bulletin board, and allow the city hall to be treated with official respite, city of Brother Cleveland, need the home moved. Play the music, please.
I play the music. United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, for the region of justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those that lost lives in the wars in the Middle East, and also we lost a former employee, Joe Cappens, this week, ex-police director, but, so a moment of silence is ours as well. Thank you. This time we're going to have to swear again. Councilor, do I need a planing, so Glenn?
Okay.
Good morning, Joseph.
Joseph.
I have a little more voters.
No, no.
Glenn, am I correct that someone celebrated a birthday today as well?
Yes.
Wish Glenn's mother a very happy birthday.
Yes, sir. Repeat after me, I, Glenn Fleming.
I, Glenn Fleming.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
To the governments.
And to the governments established. In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Council member.
Council member.
Of the city of New Brunswick.
Of the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We're going to have some remarks by Mr. Fleming and Mullis.
Yes.
I also noticed a distinguished visitor to our council chambers, Mayor Cahill. I'd leave it up to us, which would like to speak if you would.
Counsel me, you guys can handle it.
Well, you have my permission.
Giving honor to the spirit of God on today, to all distinguished guests, to the members of the council, to our mayor, to my bishop, to my other bishop who adopted me, Reverend Hendricks, he's in the back, to my family, to my mother, to everybody. I stand before you today upon the foundations of a legacy. It is a legacy that which was manifest so many years ago, when the founders of this nation granted and conceptualized in the Constitution the right to self-determination of its citizens. It was a right that at this nation's inception was only granted to a select minority of its citizenry, and because of this, so many had to achieve suffrage by alternative means. There were some who achieved suffrage by the long and tenuous road of the legislative process, while others, like my father's generation, who I dedicate this day to, right now, I dedicate it to my father Max Fleming, who's in heaven. I'll talk about that in a moment. But there were others, like my father's generation, who shed blood, risked life and limb, and marched against the powers that be, and that there are some who made the ultimate sacrifice, and now they're laying in their graves all for the dream that one day this nation would live up to its highest ideals and embrace the concept of one man and one vote. And it was through this process that opened up the doors of the electoral opportunities to women, people of color, and those who had been previously disenfranchised and shut out of the process. But nevertheless, no matter how we arrived at this point of universal suffrage, we can now see the evidence of that fleeting idea of self-determination that culminated just a few years ago, when Americans truly embraced the motto of "Viplobus Unum," or in other words, "out of many comes one." And it was out of the many that Americans all across this land reached across all racial, ethnic, socio-economic backgrounds, and they embraced the mantle of hope and change, and under the belief of, yes, we can, we came together to elect Barack Obama, the first president of African descent, to the presidency of the United States. And as upon this legacy, the legacy upon which my father's generation marched and were beaten for, the legacy where some hung, bled, and are laying in their graves for, and the same legacy of those who have served in this seat before me, that I humbly stand before you today, and I accept your appointment to the city council in the city of New Brunswick.[1360.01][1360.01](applause). And while I realize that under these unique circumstances of an appointment, that I have yet to achieve your support through an electoral mandate, I ask you for your prayers, your support, and your affirmation of that type of mandate, and I just ask you today to let you know that I'm not a perfect man, but the God that I serve is perfect.[1388.73][1388.73](applause). And if and when I stumble, I just ask you to be patient with me, because God has not finished with me yet. I ask you for your prayers through this time as we go through a transition, and I just ask you as we go through this difficult time, that we need to know that God is still perfect and he's still in charge. And somebody asked at this place and at this time, well, what do you plan to do? Why would you even want this at this time? Or in other words, who are you going to represent? Somebody asked me, am I going to be the black representative? I don't know where they got that from.[1428.82][1428.82](laughter). And then somebody asked, well, you're going to represent Rutgers Village, where you live at? And then somebody even said, are you going to represent the church? And when I thought about this, and I began to contemplate this, I began to look back and think about that speech that I heard so many years ago, way back in 1984, during the Democratic National Convention. That was the night that the Reverend Jesse Louis Jackson, who at the time, with respect to Shirley Chisholm, was the first person of African descent to be given serious consideration for the Democratic nomination to the presidency of the United States. And as he stood before the convention that night, he stood up and he spoke about a people, a people who had been previously shut out, shut down, and locked out of the process. And as he stood before the convention that night, he went on to say, "My constituency are the desperate, the damned, the disinherited, the disrespected, and the despised. They are restless, and they seek relief, and they had voted in record numbers, they invested their hope, trust, and faith in us, the Democratic Party, and the Democratic Party must send them a signal that we care. I pledge my best not to let them down, for there is a call to conscience, of leadership must heed the call of redemption, expansion, healing, and unity, for there the key to achieving our mission. Time is neutral and does not change things, but with courage and initiative, leaders can change things. No generation can choose the age or the circumstance in which it is born, but through leadership, it can choose to make it an age in which it is born, an age of enlightenment, an age of jobs, an age of peace, and an age of justice." And after he had finished his speech, there were those all across America who were elated that at long last someone was there to give their voice, their concerns, their long time and nightmare in the wilderness would soon be over. But as you know, the Democratic Party in 1984 went on to lose the general election and they nominated someone else, and in November they lost one of the biggest electoral landslides in the history of the presidential politics, and many of those who had been brought into the process, those who had voted for the first time in their adult lives, ones who invested all of their faith in the democratic process, had now saw their issues placed on a proverbial back burner of the American psyche. These are the ones who have been rolled over by the Reagan Revolution, they have been bushwhacked by the Bushes, cornered by the Clintons, and even in the era of Obama, where they had voted for hope and their change was not coming fast enough, their "yes, we can" was quickly becoming "maybe we can't." There are too many people tonight in America, we're living in a time where too many people have lost hope, they have lost all their faith in the American system. They have no hope economically, because many of them have become unemployed or underemployed, and they're barely making ends meet. They have no hope in the educational system, because they feel like their children are trapped in a system that is in a revolution against itself. They have no hope, they have no hope in the judicial system, because many, we are living in a country today that wants to build more state-of-the-art prisons than state-of-the-art schools. They have no hope politically, because many feel like they have been shut down and shut out of the system, and they feel like their leaders are not listening to them anymore. And because of political expediency or opportunism, many of these issues are not put at the forefront of political campaigns. These are not the issues that you will see on a bumper sticker, but as I stand before you today, I say to you that just because these problems are not at the forefront of the American psyche, it does not mean that these problems have gone away. So I say to you today that I do not shun these issues, nor I can pretend that they do not exist, nor can I push them aside for political expediency or political opportunism. But on this day, I wholeheartedly embrace them, and I say to you today, when you ask who am I going to represent, I say to you that my constituency are the desperate, the damned, the disinherited, the disrespected, and the despised. Those are the ones who are restless and are seeking relief. I say to you, I say to you, those of you that feel like you have no voice, I will be your voice in this city. No matter where you are or where you live, my seat will be your seat, and you will have a voice in this city, no matter where you live. Whether you live uptown, downtown, midtown, or across town, you have a voice in this city. From Pine Street to Mine Street, from Rutgers Village to Roberson Village, you have a voice in this city. Whether you're from Cook College or you're a cook at the college, you have a voice in this city. Whether you're a senior citizen or a senior in high school, you have a voice in this city. From the rich and enterprise to the poor and disenfranchised, you have a voice in this city. Today is about moving forward together in this city. A rising tide lifts all boats, and it's time for us to lift up and go on together. We can no longer be the healthcare city when the health of some of our people are still suffering. It's time for us to see a real revitalization all across this town. We have a great story to tell, but we need other people to feel revitalization and bring them into the mix. So we need to make sure that if we break out, we break out a revitalization in this town together. And I also say to you today that I'm not narcissistic enough to believe that my assuming this seat will be some type of proverbial magic wand, when all of our problems, our issues will disappear overnight, but I can promise you that I'll be fighting for each and every one of you each and every day, to create an atmosphere by which we can all prosper and have the opportunity to achieve our very best. This has to be a two-way street, though. We must be also willing to get involved and do the work which we can all expect to achieve our very best, and let us not expect any man or anyone to do for us that which God has given our ability that we should be able to do for ourselves. In closing, I would like to pay homage to a great American that our country and our state and our community lost recently. Congressman Donald Payne, the first and only African-American elected congressman from the state of New Jersey, he recently lost his battle with cancer, but even though the man is gone, his legacy will still... But even though the man is gone, his legacy will still live on. And one indelible remnant that I have of him is that he used to like to paraphrase a quote originally coined by the French poet Victor Hugo. It was often quoted by Dr. Martin Luther King, and the quote goes on to say, "There is nothing more powerful than an idea or a dream whose time has come." Sometimes in political leadership, the leader is marching a little bit in front of the people, and sometimes he's marching a little bit behind. But sometimes, the marcher and the drum major are in exact same cadence, and then finally great things will happen. And as we go forth from this day, it made me reflect when I first thought about running for office in the 1990s. I hesitated, because I knew it was not my time. Then in 2000, when I ran and lost by landslide, the voters let me know that it was not my time. And then a few years ago, when I stood before the Democratic Committee, came close, but I was still told it was not my time. And then finally, recently, when I was informed that I had gotten the appointment, somebody asked me, they said, "How does it finally feel that it's finally your time?" And as I contemplated this and thought about our mission, I looked at them and I said, "It's not my time, it's our time. It's not my time, it's our time." So today, I ask you, as we go forth from this place, don't let me walk in front of you, don't let me walk behind you, but let us march all in perfect cadence, and let's let good things begin to happen and declare that it's our time. So as I say to you today, if you want safer neighborhoods, let us march together, because it's our time. If you want not just good urban schools, but great schools, period, let us march together, because it's our time. If you want to rebuild the good community police relations and better jobs for our people, let us march together, because it's our time. And if you want to build a better New Brunswick and move this city forward, let us join us on our mission today, because it's our time. It's our time. It's our time. God bless this city, God bless you all, and may God bless the United States of America.
Oh, is there any way I can bow down? Well, I congratulate you, Glenn, for being here on the Mr. Fleming. I'm excited that you've joined us. My time is short here, but I'm a colleague that we found we have together. We've spoken recently, and I'm looking for big things from you, and I believe that you will be representing everybody throughout the city, which is something we always try to do. So congratulations, welcome, and it's time to get to work. The other council member, wish to comment?
I'm sorry. In my excitement and things, I just wanted to thank Councilman Cook and his absence for his years of service. I just wanted to know if we can give a hand for him. My apologies, but, you know, charge to my head and not to my heart, Bob Racine is also retiring, but he's been fighting for us for a very long time, and he said his time is short. I just wanted to know if we can give him a hand, stand up, a hand we gotta give.
Thank you very much. Yeah, any council members who are...
I just want to second what our council president said, and they are welcome. Forward to work.
I was welcome. Anybody who could help you, if you ever have to take a pass.
Congratulations, and I don't think I'm quite too good in the past, and I know that we want to continue breaking all the borders today. So we need to, absolutely, you know, overmate to better the values of the citizens of this city.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to say anything at this point, but I'll be over your...
First of all, if you all noticed that Glenn is a shy, reserved fellow. Kinda quiet, certainly can preach, did a super job. And I think that the remarks that Glenn made is indicative of the type of person that he is, and why it is our time in the city of New Brunswick to take benefit of the talents, energy, and wisdom that he brings to this City Council. What I admire about Glenn is his appreciation of family, of city, as a lifelong resident of the city of New Brunswick, and God, and church, and religion. Glenn is a good man. And in the world of politics and elected office, good men, good people, are critically important. But what's really exceptional about Glenn is Glenn never sought to be a councilperson because he wants to be somebody. I am convinced that Glenn wants to be a councilperson because he wants to do something. And that's a big difference. And that's a big difference. Elected officials in today's world is a thankless job. So someone willing to go in for all the right reasons and to take on the mantle of good government, it's exceedingly exceptional in today's world. So Glenn, I know that your family is very proud of you, your mom, your wife, your two boys, and all your family. I know Max, who I had the fortune to know, would love to be here, but he is, and he would be exceedingly proud as well. You should, in turn, be proud of your family, as I know you are, because they have supported you and put you in the position in many ways so that you can, in fact, do this. And as you go forward, family, he's gonna need some help, and there's gonna be some nights that are gonna be tough, and some days that are gonna be tough, but with your support and help and prayers, I know Glenn will do an absolutely outstanding job on behalf of all of us here in the city of New Brunswick. So Glenn, you join an outstanding group of folks. They have been remarkable and extraordinary in all the things that have been accomplished in the city of New Brunswick, but as you noted in your remarks, there is much more to do. So welcome aboard. We welcome you as part of the team. We know great things are about to come. Thanks so much, God bless everybody.
Okay, it's on to business now. We have minutes that are being held from May 16th. We have a public hearing scheduled for LaFamosa on our liquor license to go. Is anyone here from LaFamosa? I would do it, and we have Mr. Hunter, Mr. Gayden, are you the speaker? We just go over each one of the detectives.
I'd say correct. His report is previously submitted to you.
Detective, would you give us a report on the investigation, please?
Yes, Detective, the Boston Police Department, LaFamosa 117 Remson Avenue. Last year, they had seven calls for service, two for disorderly persons or disorderly conduct. This year, it is up from 15 to 15 total calls, 10 for disorderly persons or disorderly conduct. The restrictions on this license aren't that severe. I believe it's a security restriction and some signage. At this point, we do recommend that the restrictions stay in place.
Certainly, name of the agency, department, addresses. My name is...
Yes.
Already, I'm with you. Yes, 117 Remson Avenue, New Brunswick.
You have anything you want to share to tell us, or are you okay with it? We can approve it with conditions?
Yes. Anything I'm not understanding, or... Somebody speak Spanish?
Yeah. Usted tiene porque estar acá le van a renovar la licencia de su negocio, ¿no? Tiene alguna cosa, tiene condiciones, la licencia que usted tiene en estos momentos, y está recomendando al detective de que se mantenga las condiciones. Por tuvieron 15 llamadas, tuvieron 15 llamadas a la policía, solamente por personas que están perturbando la paz alrededor del negocio. So usted tiene algo que decir con eso, está de acuerdo de que se mantengan las condiciones de la licencia, o tiene algo que desear hablarle, algún ser?
Security and conditions.
Que sigan, sí, esa tiene de condiciones, pero la licencia de...
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment on this? Anyone? What are the conditions of that? Security and signage.
I believe the specific signage is correct.
Las condiciones de seguridad, ¿no? Y cada uno de los veteranos que tiene que cambiarlos, anularlos, ¿no? Okay, muchas gracias, se puede sentar, gracias.
Okay, so this is new order on the... We have ordinances on second reading, ODAS 061203, bond orders provided for the 2012 General Capital Improvement Program by the City of Russell County, New Jersey, appropriating Therefore, authorizing a debt amount of $2,615,000 requiring down payment of $103,973. Anyone wish to comment on the ordinance? Mr. Cradell?
Mr. Cradell, Patterson Street, just wanted to ask, what is it for?
Mr. Lockland?
It is to fund the general capital improvements that have been considered and are part of the budget request for 2012.
Any major projects?
Yes, we're appropriating some money to rebuild Jewels Lane. We are appropriating some money to continue with the design of a new recreation park. We are appropriating some money for the final improvements. We want to make the Joyce Kilmer Park. We're appropriating some money to be used towards bringing field turf to the Memorial We are purchasing some vehicles that need to be purchased. One is a passenger van for recreation, the other are, I think, two dump trucks and DPW. We're appropriating a fair amount of money to upgrade the radio system in the fire department to be FCC compliant.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you leave it on the...
Seven.
Go call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esteban?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernardi?
Aye.
Council President, please.
Aye. ODAS 061204, bond orders providing various approvals to work to satisfy the city of Russell County, New Jersey, appropriating $930,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $930,000 bonds, notices, and plans to force thereof. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, would you order?
Seven.
Go call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esteban?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernardi?
Aye.
Council President, please.
Aye. ODAS 071201, an ordinance to amend advisory ordinances for a fee schedule.
Move the ordinance setting down July 18th, the public hearing, to be advertised.
Seven.
Go call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esteban?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernardi?
Aye.
Council President, please.
Aye. ODAS 071202, an ordinance to amend advisory ordinances regarding front yard storage.
Move the ordinance setting down July 18th at 5:30, same day to be advertised for public hearing.
Seven, go call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esteban?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernardi?
Aye.
Council President, please.
Aye. ODAS 071203 is being held to the request of the city attorney. We moved down a resolution, we have a resolution, RDA 071201 to RDA 071228, 03 has been pulled. And we're holding 21. Anyone wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Mr. Renner?
Yes, Charles from Harvey Street in Brunswick. Resolution 225, can you break out for us the brokers' commissions and other commissions included in the total package that you spoke about?
Yes, the BGIA Commission on the Etna Contract, which is worth about $8.9 million, is $180,000 a year.
Is that the only commission?
The only commission on the Etna Contract. The commission on the Cigna Contract, the Brokerage Benefits Foundation of America, that commission is $91,000, again on the Cigna Contract. And there's a small commission on the dental plan, which I don't have in front of me at the moment, but BGIA, again, is the broker on our prescription contract, and their commission is $22,000 a year for that work.
So we're talking about roughly $300,000 in commissions?
Just something to that, yes.
Thirty million dollars. Do you know whether or not BGIA is a contributor to the Democratic Party in the city of the county?
I don't know, it's a time I am, I think you want the information, contact the Democratic Party.
Mr. Lockland referred to a memo that he had drafted that was revised today. Is that available to the public connection?
I would ask that it be over, then it would be happy to respond to it.
Put an offer response in?
Yeah, it's a great...
Thank you.
Anyone else on any of the resolutions? Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Stewart, I can come back if you wish. No, I think I've caught up here. Resolution number nine, and also represents resolution number 19. Do we... Do you keep any sort of running record of legal fees?
Yes, Mr. Lockland has that in his office.
Yeah, so that's available by cases, so we know how much some of these cases are costing, right?
Each one of these, when a resolution goes through, gives you the latest amount that needs to be paid out. It's a cumulative...
No. Because I don't understand what I'm looking at.
I first to you, many times you've asked, I guess I can do it.
Oh, you have been done it many times.
Well, one of the sounds will get to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Cradell?
Charles Cradell, Patterson Street. I wanted to ask the 071208 leasing of the water tower, why are we leasing the water tower?
There's a word here about Mr. Lockland, I'll give him the explanation. He leases up on a Hettigraff bid, rising had bid for 20-some years, they had not responded to this bid as the bid, the original bid, so it's being a bid. We stand to make like $42,000 per year on leasing of the antennas on the tower.
Antennas, okay.
Well, no, we're bidding.
Cellular antennas.
Gotcha.
We, by the way, have cellular antenna leases on all of our water towers and an additional structure of the water treatment.
210, I have to ask James Lemon, Margaret Payolov, any relation to our new councilman?
I don't believe so.
I wanted to ask about 212, the Court Tavern getting a liquor license, which liquor license is this from which establishment?
It's from the Regis.
The Regis, that's okay. I guess, yeah, just about the healthcare contract, I think you said that the BGIA representative is here tonight. Perhaps you could ask him to speak to, you know, the services they're providing and also to the donations their company's made.
I'll ask about the services provided, and one of the nations we asked, maybe we...
Stewart Ligon is with BGIA. He'd be happy to speak to his firm's work here with us. He's been the broker for a number of years, and he'd be happy to speak to that.
Jennifer, please.
Tell us what your services are, please.
Yes. Thank you, Council. We are the health insurance broker for the city of New Brunswick, and we provide a wide variety of services to you, summarized, by the way, for the current year in a document that each of you have. I'll just reference this for a moment and say that just for this year alone, we were able to negotiate on your behalf... year alone, we were able to negotiate on your behalf with Aetna, and save about $7,200 on your medical administrative costs, $107,000 on your stop loss insurance, they were increasing, Aetna was twenty-one and a half percent, and we reduced that to zero percent. We're able to introduce a wellness fund that Aetna will be supporting, $25,000, that will help manage your claims, and therefore reduce your medical loss ratio and keep your cost of health insurance down. Very critical, we're looking forward to introducing some programs for the employees now with $25,000 to incent them to be involved in some wellness initiatives. We introduced a company called Partners in Care this year, and we project that that will save approximately $3 million over the next five years, and a million dollars a year thereafter. Partners in Care is an innovative company in disease management that provides disease management based on patient-centered medical home model. It's very new and creative, and comes out of primarily the P P A C, the otherwise called the Obamacare. But it is a way to, to get employees to be compliant with their disease management, those, for example, who have hypertension, those that have diabetes. It'll be a service that your employees and members will enjoy, because there will be a relationship between them and their doctor that will be, that will be incented by Partners in Care to be more formal and more productive for their health. In addition, we've introduced a program that would be an alternate benefit plan for employees that begin contributing toward their healthcare, which would save about 27% on the cost of healthcare for those employees that choose the alternative plan design. We went to the marketplace on your behalf, as we do every year, and we found that there were a few carriers that did provide bids that enabled us to negotiate with Aetna, but they weren't really productive for you to make a switch at this time. We also did a dependent eligibility audit for you this year, and the audit is designed to find any dependents that are enrolled on the plan that really should not be enrolled on the plan. And we found eighty-two dependents that were disenrolled as a result of our dependent eligibility audit, and that saved by estimations based on a per dependent cost, almost $200,000. So for this year alone, we believe that we've saved in excess of $700,000, $800,000, just from negotiations we provided and introducing Partners in Care. But in addition to the services that we provided this year on your behalf, we do enrollment issues with, with the city for those employees that need to be enrolled or disenrolled, eligibility issues we're involved in, we are involved in making sure that you are compliant based on the P P A C rules and other HIPAA regulations, et cetera. We have a claim adjudication department where if there's any difficult claim issues, we are there to assist and support you in that regard, and to come up with creative and innovative ideas to help keep your costs as low as possible. We also did the analysis for the state health benefits plan and determined that the cost is not effective for the city of Brunswick. I want to say that I applaud the administration for their proactive approach to keeping healthcare costs as low as possible and introducing some of these innovative strategies that we're doing even now and have done, I think we've been involved for almost fifteen years here at the city, and that, I think, is the reason why you'll see that your costs are lower than the state health benefits plan, and we believe will track considerably lower over time because of the efforts that we jointly have put forth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the resolutions? See nothing, resolutions?
Second.
Local?
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Esteban?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernardi?
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye. Does any council member wish to address the public at this time? Does anybody from the public wish to address the council? You're back? Name and address?
Joyce Sheen, Worthies Road, New Brunswick. Back in September, I was here with several neighbors, residents on Wilcox Road regarding a sewage problem we were having, and at that time, Steve Zarek said that they were funding the budget to do an I N I study, which was good news for us, that's something that's going to be done. A few weeks ago, there were a lot of trucks out on the street between midnight and four A M, and I was wondering if the council could tell me what is really being done, what was found underground in the sewer lines, and where are the city plans to proceed from here to stop the sewage from bashing up into the homes.
I would ask you to, I think they've been televising the interior of the pipes and what the conditions are, they come to that report.
Yeah, we completed our internal inspection of the sewer lines up in the area of the mentioned, employees at Wilcox Road in that area. There were some minor deficiencies found on the, on this inspection. We are working with our consulting engineer at this time to evaluate what the inspection did find, and as soon as we figure out what the cause may be of some of the deficiencies that we did find, then we will proceed towards rectifying those issues.
What were those deficiencies? Are there cracks in the line, or?
There are a few cracks, there were some sag in the pipe where pipe's supposed to be, you know, sewage is supposed to flow by gravity. There were section, one section that we found that the pipe is sagging, that's where one of the areas that we do have to try to identify why and then go in and correct. We did go quite a bit beyond the immediate area of Wilcox to see if it might have been downstream of that area. Again, at this point in time, we do not, I've seen the results of the camera inspection work, we just have not finished our evaluation and determination yet of what we need to do in order to correct the problem.
Is there any kind of timeframe that we're looking at to come to a decision on what we're going to do to correct the problem?
We are in the midst of doing almost 45,000 feet of this inspection work, we've been out there, as she announced, we start at eleven and work till seven in the morning. We're probably three to four weeks into the job, we've got another eight weeks or so to go. If we can do it, you know, a portion at a time, that's what we will do, but right now, no, I, I cannot give you a definitive timeframe yet.
Can I call your office for updates?
Yes.
Always call his office.
Always.
Always.
Okay, Mr. Lottler, I can do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Renda?
Yes, Charles from the Harvey Street. Last meeting, I asked about the accident rate on the red light camera thing, we got any report on that?
Yes. Lieutenant Miller, on that accident rate, I know you had that?
Yes. Did a study for the twelve months before the camera was installed, and then the following twelve months afterward was installed, and the accident dropped thirty-eight percent.
Can we get numbers on that?
Numbers, I believe J T report was, in his report, he said that three red light, there were thirteen recorded crashes at that intersection, post-red light, there've been eight, I think that's how he arrived at his thirty-eight percent reduction.
Yeah, I apologize, I misunderstood, but you wanted to know the money.
I would be happy to get to that.
I also wanted to know the money after, he did answer what I wanted to know. Okay. Also, money was next.
We collected $515,000 last year relative to that red light camera at Park and Easton. We've collected $248,000 year to date so far.
Okay, is it possible to categorize the kinds of accidents, were they pedestrian, vehicular, were they significant, were there injuries, were they minor? That sort of thing.
Okay. Twelve months following the installation of the camera, there were, there was one rear end collision, three right angle collisions, one side swipe, one front end collision, one left turn collision, and one pedestrian collision, for a total of eight. Prior, there was five rear end collisions, two right angle collisions, two side swipe collisions, two front end collisions, two left turn collisions, zero pedestrian collisions, for a total of thirteen. I do not notice a variation of the injuries.
There's been, as we all know, there's been publicity on red light camera at lakes, and one of the indications is the length of the yellow signal, and whether it's based upon posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour, or whether it's based upon the actual speed of cars that traverse that area. Can you get any information on the length of the yellow signal and the average speed that is used to decide how to, how to make the time for the yellow tag?
We've, we've used the eighty-five percent. Some of the towns have not used the right timing sequence for the yellow. I have a letter here from the secretary of the Department of Transportation that says our yellow time is compliant with both accepted engineering practices and the R L R legislation. There is no required action by the city of Brunswick. So I think we have clearly understood that it's not simply ten miles, one second for every ten miles per hour posted, it's eighty-five percent of the vehicles approaching the intersection of what their average speed is. Our yellow light calculation is, is accurate, it's compliant with the, with the legislation, and we're also compliant with our six-month inspections that are required as well. We also have a letter from the administrative offices of the court that say all those other intersections out there must suspend their, their red light ticketing program, we are not required to do that, we're one of the twenty-two that are still in good order.
Can we get the actual length of the yellow light, and whether or not we have a double red there, and whether the, and what the speed is that's used to calculate the yellow, the actual numbers, and whether it's done in one direction only, and if so, which direction, or it's done in both directions? Steve? How do you get that for your, I don't, Lieutenant, if you caught that, if not, Mr. Renda, maybe you can talk to Lieutenant here, so he can answer every, can answer every question that you just posed. How about just the yellow light light? You know the yellow light light in time?
I don't know, I don't have any practice.
I have a question also on the ordinance you introduced on first reading tonight, number two oh two. Thank you, you've given us a copy of the ordinance for our first reading, for the, at least I was out there and reading it for the first time, and I appreciate that, I wish you could continue that. But looking at that, I, it's hard to put it into perspective. It amends section three oh three, and adds a new section three oh three point nine, it has to do with items being stored for more than ten days outside of premises that were not, were not designed to be stored outside. How does that change from the current provisions, and what does this section add that's not already there?
It's a new subsection to three oh three. Three oh three is a section, three oh three point nine is a subsection to that.
I understand, but it says amended to include a new subsection three oh three point nine. I'm asking you what that adds to the existing.
There is no three oh three point nine. This is just, and maybe the worry is, is just a little confusing, there is no three oh three point nine.
Well, I'm not asking, referring to the section here, that's the entire section three oh three, already it's prohibited to have inside furniture on your front porch, as I understand it, the ordinance is already prohibit certain activities. What does this add, the legal change from the existing? I think what it adds is the current provision of storage in the front yard. I don't think that was in originally from the law.
We've had some enforcement problems in at least one neighborhood with someone who collects things, does try to solve it, but collects them, and passed the enforcement that was required that the lawn mowers be placed in the backyard. Of late, the lawn mowers are appearing in the front yard for no apparent reason, and this ordinance is specifically addressing that and similar problems.
So this is really aimed at lawn mowers in the front yard?
It's aimed at keeping neighborhoods looking as nice as they can, and helping to keep adjoining property owners maintain their property in the same way that they're expected to be.
I guess I'll have to check online and see exactly what is included in three oh three now, because it seems to me if you, you could just amend three oh three point eight or three oh three point seven to include lawn mowers into the listing of things. It's not specific to lawn mowers. Well, it was the example Mr. Haplet was giving, it's not specific to lawn mowers. So what else was it? Never mind.
Anyone else?
Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Cradell, you ignore me?
I'm trying, that doesn't work.
It doesn't work. Could the police or whoever does check the pedestrian timing? I'm particularly interested in the corner by my building, New Street and Neale, there are two sides to the street. One side, you can, you have to go most of the way across, but not all of it, you know, because there is an island out there, Park Ray. But the light does not, the pedestrian light does not give you much time to get across there. Whether that is, whether that can be changed to give a little more time for pedestrians, because handicap pedestrians are not as mobile, or not as good at track time as some of the other people.
We could check on that, Mr. Lottler?
Yeah, that is a signal that's under the jurisdiction of the State Department of Transportation, but I think we could try and learn more about the, the time of the pedestrian signal, whether it can be adjusted or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Cradell?
Hi, everyone, Charles Cradell, Patterson Street. Just have a few questions tonight, also welcome to the council, Mr. Fleming. First of all, I wanted to credit Bob Delvin, the director of the library, for rescuing a lot of the archives from the home news, they moved that in their office, and he's Brunswick, they're down in Somerville, and they wanted to leave behind a lot of archives, but he rescued them, so I think that's really.
He's a good father.
He's good, he's good at what he does. And I also wanted to, in addition to welcoming you to the council, Mr. Fleming, I wanted to ask you two things, I hope you'll support televising these meetings, putting them on cable television.
I have to charge my hundreds, sorry, Mr. Cradell. Ask, ask in the hallway.
I, I think this is a fair thing to ask about. I, I wanted to ask also that the meeting times be moved to six thirty and seven? I'm asking all of you to do this.
Those are the times this year, so.
Right, and I'm asking that next summer that you have the meetings at a time that's easier for folks to get to who are working and can't make it here by five thirty. I think it's certainly fair to ask, and I think that, I hope Mr. Fleming will support it, I know I've spoken to certain members of the council, who've expressed that they support televising the meetings, support having them at a more convenient time, so I hope that everyone will support it on the council, including me. I also wanted to ask about the budget, I noticed the three largest single line items that increased were, number one, Y S S, and I just wondered what specifically that was, that was for, does that have to do with the new director?
Mr. Lottler?
What, what document are you looking at that suggests?
One of the twelve projects. I think Y S S, like, it was appropriate.
The single largest increase?
It was appropriate $56,000 for 2011, but it actually spent much more, one seventy. I just, I thought maybe that has to do with the director being in that division.
No, our Y S S program has a value much greater than that, but that is the money that we raise to support Y S S, the Board of Education contributes a fair amount of money towards the program as well, I'd have to.
I got you, that might be what.
The director hasn't changed in that department, I just think it's a kind of an accounting thing, but if you give me a chance to look at that more closely.
Sure, and we should try to set the time, we can talk more about it. The other two I need to ask about are that, I noticed the mayor's office has a big salary and wages boost up to, like, on the level of fifty percent, and also the director of law office has a large increase, I wanted to get an explanation for this.
Mr. Lottler, we have that now.
The mayor's office would reflect Russ joining the team. The mayor's office would reflect Russ joining the team. I draw a blank on that.
Marquette.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Russell Marquette joining the team, and that was, it also recognizes Mr. Bray's departure. We also have Chris Butler, I believe, fully funded out of the mayor's budget in past years. He might have been over in the economic development budget.
Gotcha.
Mr. Cradville, show me his numbers. I'll be happy to check them after. I'm surprised at the numbers you're quoting. I'm not disagreeing at this point, but I don't know the reference.
I'll just pull up real quick here. Yeah, appropriate $177 at 11, $192 actually paid, and then $232 for this year for salaries and wages, office of the director.
You're going to have to let me see the whole because there were changes made as far as we entered the prosecutor. And I'm not sure if that's what we're talking about.
Okay, we'll take some time to do that. And then, yeah, if those things are going up, I know things like the city clerk's office is being set down, so I kind of want to see, like, why these things are happening. And the last part is the UEZ. I know that, is that, is there a status on the UEZ money? Is that going to come in this year or no?
I think there's some money available on some older activity, but it's all phasing out and maybe, Glenn, if you don't want to be specific on, you know, when the end of the program is.
Well, the end of revenues coming into the city, that ended over a year ago when Governor Christie cut that from the budget and kept all those dollars for the state. So we get no new revenue. What we have had are revenues that had already been generated and put into our local account, and we have been using that to fund the existing programs that we have, such as funding the Clean Team, which has the teams that clean both downtown, Easton Avenue, French Street, Remsen Avenue, and the trolley system in town, which funds part of the system that we do with the county. There are no new revenues coming in with that. UEZ program, in terms of businesses being able to participate in that, that continues. Those businesses would register directly with the state and handle it directly with their office, the municipal offices, whether it's here in Brunswick or in the other municipal offices, they do not handle the registrations directly. But if a business wants to be able to provide the 50% sales tax decrease, they will be able to continue to do that or get the 100% sales tax reduction for purposes that they make directly.
Just a reminder that in addition to some of the UEZ money being used to offset some administrative costs, an awful lot of it was used to underwrite the improvements on George Street, which appropriate some local laws as well, but that's an awful lot of the funding came from the UEZ. And also, if you just don't mind me saying, next meeting is the public hearing on the budget, and obviously feel free to raise some questions then, and I'd be happy between now and then to answer anything you have while blind as well.
Thank you very much. And it's just, you know, the wellness center topped out this week, and I think that's really cool that that's moving forward so fast, and I hope that it's an affordable place for people to get groceries and affordable place for people to get fit and well and swim. And please, please televise your meetings, let people see what goes on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Most reassuring.
Second.
Welcome.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Berlotti.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye. Anything given up?